Gardner City Council will come to order if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had modification to the original published agenda presentations for our awards for our wastewater team will be postponed to another council meeting. There is time allotted on the agenda if members of the public would like to speak on an item that does not appear on the agenda or that is on the agenda that is not part of a public That being the case, we will move to the consent agenda. The applicant for item number three on the consent agenda has asked that it be removed. How would council like to proceed, excuse me, is there another item on the consent agenda that council would like to have removed? How would council like to proceed with consent agenda items one, two, and four?
I move we approve consent agenda items one, two, and four.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Morrow that we approve consent agenda items one, two, and four. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. If the officers would join us for new business item number one. New business item number one, consider adopting resolution number 1879, a resolution honoring and recognizing the accomplishments of Gardner Police Chief Kenneth A. Francis, whereas on September 14th, 2012, our beloved police chief Kenneth A. Francis responded to his last call. Whereas in July 1987, Kenneth A. Francis moved to Gardner, Kansas to become the city's police chief where he was instrumental in successfully implementing the concept of public safety which combined police, fire, and medical response, eventually becoming the city's first and only Director of Public Safety, a title he held until November 2010. Whereas Chief Francis was the 2002 recipient of the Clarence M. Kelly Award, which is presented to a criminal justice executive in the Kansas City metropolitan area honoring his proactive approach and dedication to improving the criminal justice system. Whereas Chief Francis is a past president of the Johnson County Police Chiefs, past president of the FBI National Academy Associates, past president of the Missouri Police Chiefs Association, and past president of the Metropolitan Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. Whereas Chief Francis also served on various committees with the International Association of Chiefs of Police, was chairman of the Advisory Board to Criminal Justice Studies at the Johnson County Community College, and was a past president of the Gardner Lions Club. Whereas Chief Francis held firmly the law enforcement code of ethics established by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, serving as a loyal, conscientious, and trustworthy police chief, faithfully performing the duties of his position with the city of Gardner for 25 years. Whereas as a man and as a public official, he leaves behind a great legacy of dedicated service towards the betterment of the Gardner community. Whereas Chief Francis, the family of the community, now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Gardner, Kansas, that this memorial be spread upon the records of the city government and that copies of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Francis and their children. That as a further mark of respect, the roll of flags on Main Street will be flown for 25 days beginning Wednesday, September 19th, 2012, to honor Chief's 25 years of service to the city of Gardner, and hereafter, the 14th day of September shall be honored as Kenneth A. Francis Memorial Day in the city of Gardner, Kansas. How would council like to proceed with resolution 1879?
I move we adopt resolution 1879 honoring and recognizing the accomplishments of Gardner Police Chief Kenneth A. Francis.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 1879. Councilman Morrow?
Yes.
Councilman Freeman?
Yes.
Councilman Fotovich?
Yes.
Councilman Gregorsec?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
1879 passes. Captain Moore would like to say a couple of words and then we will go on to the rest of the agenda.
I just wanted to say that on behalf of the men and women of the Gardner Police Department, we appreciate the support from the governing body as well as the community and the county in general. We've had extremely strong upworn support. I know it's going to be a rough week for everybody, but the support that we have, we know we're going to get through it. Thank you all.
Thank you all. New business item number two, consider passing an ordinance approving amendments to Title 18 zoning of the code of the city of Gardner, Kansas. Amy, can this be the ordinance number?
2406. This may not be quite as upbeat as I had originally planned for it to be, but not a fun act to follow. The purpose of the zoning amendments was to adopt a new version of the Gardner Design Standards, which adds to landscape design standards chapter definitions related to landscaping and storage yard amendments, which were recently passed and for general housekeeping purposes, including amending the recently adopted landscaping chapter to fix errors, eliminate confusion, and better coordinate with the new landscape design standards, and then also to amend some existing definitions. In the new chapter 18165, it's now called landscaping and screening as opposed to just landscaping, we added some goals to screen unsightly views, encourage preservation of existing plants, and promote the importance of landscaping, which are three things we were definitely trying to achieve that weren't explicitly stated. We also clarified administrative procedures, clearing up some issues with how the authority was stated, exceptions and enforcement. Some of the more significant changes include changing the minimum size for small deciduous trees to six feet in height, which corresponds more to what other cities are doing, reduced the minimum height for parking perimeter hedge from three to two and a half feet, change the minimum size for facade planting areas to an average of five feet wide to prevent those doing the minimum from giving us a five by five box. This would allow more creativity with the design. Also replace the preservation section in entirety. This would have credits issued by the director with a, this would allow for shrubs to be credited also if they're significant, they would have to be at least twice the minimum planting size. You can also get double credits if it's more than four times the minimum planting size. Would also have to be healthy of a desirable species and protected during construction, which was not specified previously. And the director can limit the number of credits based on how well the existing landscaping serves the purpose of the landscaping it's replacing.
Amy, can you go back to that slide or do you want to?
Sure.
Have us hold our questions till the end. What is the significance of reducing the height from a perimeter hedge half a foot?
It's not really a significant change. The reason that that was put in there was because the parking perimeter wall height was a maximum of three feet, and so to have a minimum of three feet for the hedge seemed like about two and a half feet is really the height that you would need to block headlights. And so as far as trying to provide the screening of the headlights, but not necessarily screening the entire parking lot and the view of the property, staff felt that two and a half feet was a more appropriate minimum height.
So the wall height is, you said three feet?
A maximum of three feet high.
And so the hedges would go in front of the wall or in place of the wall?
It would be in place of the wall.
And then what about, I'm not sure I understand what the facade planting area average of five feet wide, what do you mean by that?
That one is requiring landscaping along the building facade. Most people, for example, around their houses will have shrubs and things, same with commercial buildings sometimes. We had specified that it had to be a minimum of five feet wide and five feet deep, and so in the case of someone trying to do just the minimum that's required, you would get five by five squares everywhere. This allows them to have more creative curving shapes, and it just has to average the five feet deep or wide.
And so before it was, what was it?
It just said five feet.
Wide?
Now it's average of five feet. Then the revision to chapter 1805 simply updates the Gardner Design Standards to the August 28th, 2012 version, which adds the landscape design standards chapter. In the landscape design standards, the purpose for those, coordination of landscaping, lighting, parks and trails, easements, utilities, accessory use of driveway, et cetera, trying to get all those to work together better. Also, it goes into a little more detail on use of hardscape elements such as fountains, walls, benches, statues, decorative pavement, et cetera, that's not required by code but may be incorporated into the landscaping. It also addresses sustainability issues which are not mandated by the code, but this would go into energy efficiency and zerscaping, that sort of thing. And also to coordinate with the Main Street Quarter Vision Plan.
What does zerscaping mean?
That's the use of drought tolerant landscaping and such native landscaping so that there's fewer water requirements. For the definitions, I won't read through everything we've defined, but new definitions related to the landscaping regulations, also to the storage yard regulations, including fencing and storage definitions, and then we amended a couple of existing definitions for family and street. The impacts, this is a comparison, and I apologize, this should have been labeled, the existing regulations is the picture on the left and the new is the one on the right. This is to just give an example, this is sort of loosely based on the Autozone property, which is a fairly typical commercial lot on Main Street. This assumes a C2 zoning, this is not actually the Autozone, so this assumed it was on the north side of the Arturo Street, just do the orientation, and then surrounded by C2 zoning to the east and west, and then it would have R1 zoning behind the property. Under the existing regulations, there would be, and by existing, I am actually referring more to the former regulations that were just replaced last month. There would have been five street trees, six site trees, and no parking lot trees required, with no interior parking landscaping required. So that's a total of 11 trees with nothing else required. Under the new regulations, there would be still five street trees, there would actually only be four site trees required, but they would have three parking trees, potentially parking lot trees is similar to what was under the former, which doesn't state a specific number, but says that the primary landscaping within interior parking lot landscaping should be trees. So in this case, it worked out to three, but depending on the design, it could be different. And then property perimeter trees, there were 14. Also now this would include a shrub requirement, so we've got 17 property perimeter shrubs, seven site shrubs, and parking lot shrubs as needed. Just playing with this, it came out to about 59, but that is not necessarily drawn exactly to scale, so. The facade area landscaping be 62 linear feet, and the interior parking lot landscaping would be just over 1,000 square feet. That's a total of 26 trees, 83 shrubs, and 1375 square feet of landscape area. Now had the one on the left not been exempted from the parking lot landscaping requirements due to the configuration of the parking lot, then it would have also been subjected to a very similar parking lot landscaping requirement. So it's not a significant change except for the inclusion of shrubs and property perimeter landscaping adjacent to lessened usage. Planning Commission did recommend approval, as they discussed in public record with a few minor changes, and that was unanimous. Any questions?
Looking at these changes and comparing to where we were before, how would the new changes compare to the other cities in the area? I know you mentioned that we tried to kind of come up, maybe catch up with some others. Are we positioning ourselves to be more restrictive? Are we, when I look at that and especially the example, I mean, it's a very glaring difference between the two, are we putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage by putting that sort of requirements on development from here on out?
We did look a lot at other cities, especially in Johnson County, to see what they were requiring, and these are very comparable to what all the other cities are requiring.
Do you think there was any incidents in there, and I apologize, I should have gotten this question to you earlier, but where we've gone over what the average might have been, where we've actually become a little bit more restrictive?
There's not, the only thing that comes to mind is a lot of communities don't have the specific shrub requirement, or they were sort of all over the place as far as did they regulate or require a certain number, how many they required. So that's one that's a little harder to say exactly where we fall. I don't have all that information in front of me, but that's the only thing that really comes to mind.
Sure. The other question I had, from an internal perspective, does this put additional burden onto, you know, what I think many have said is an understaffed department, are we going to be able to manage these new regulations and proactively manage as it goes forth? Maybe their development plan's under place, but then once construction goes into play and they actually fully develop the property, are we going to be able to go out and measure and enforce these regulations? Are we going to be prepared to do that?
That's another great question. I think that enforcement wise, this isn't really changing the requirements on our staff. They're a little bit more complex in what they require, but most of that's going to be at the review stage upfront, and then when they go out to the site, they just look to see, does it match the plan? And so I don't think that, you know, this is going to change anything drastically as far as that time goes.
From the developer's perspective and the plans that are sent to, I assume that they actually, if it says 1,400 square feet, they'll calculate within their presentation to say how many square feet they're encompassing with their plan so we don't have to?
That's right, yes, the developer provides those calculations.
Okay, excellent. Those were the questions I had.
Were the terms stacking and racking of chassis and cargo containers, were those in the previous?
Those are from a couple of years ago, those have not changed in this ordinance.
Those were there before?
Yes.
And there was also treatment of landscaping of those items then too or not? I mean, they were, you're saying they were allowed?
Referring to the cargo container ordinance that was passed?
Right.
The cargo container facilities have significant landscaping requirements above and beyond what's required by this, if that's what you're asking.
So it is, but is there, is all that covered in this document or the?
No, that's covered in a different section that we're not amending. That's under the special users chapter.
Just to make sure, there's no changes beyond what's in the presentation from what the zoning did, plans were before?
I didn't go in detail through every single wording change, that was the things that will, are the most significant changes as far as how this applies.
Other questions? How would council like to proceed with ordinance 2406?
I move we pass ordinance 2406.
Second. Motion Harrison, second Gregorsec that we pass ordinance 2406. Harrison?
Yes.
Gregorsec?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
2406 passes.
Now, you'll notice in your council action form, there's actually two different ordinances that need to be passed. The ordinance that amends section 1805035 of, for adopting the design standards, due to the legal requirements pertaining to how an ordinance incorporates a document by reference, that did have to be done separately.
Okay.
The wording's a little different.
So that would be ordinance 2407.
Correct.
How would council like to proceed with ordinance 2407?
I move we pass ordinance number 2407. Second.
Motion Morrow, second Freeman that we pass ordinance 2407. Morrow?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
Gregorsec?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
2407 passes. Cheryl regarding item number three?
We'll bring that back when we bring back the consent item number three.
It's been requested to remove?
We will bring them back together.
Three as well, okay. Item number four, consider passing ordinance number 2408, declaring it a public necessity to acquire land by condemnation and directing the city attorney to make application to the district court for the appointment of commissioners to appraise land and to conduct condemnation proceedings relative to the white drive sewer improvements. David?
Thank you. First, sorry, we burdened you with a little more information than you needed. The ordinance consists of the ordinance itself and then the exhibit A, there's a series of five that are just the specific descriptions of the easements required. The project consists of, as you can see, the purple line beginning up around the Gardner Greenway, proceeding along Washington Street, proceeding southly across the US 56 and the BNSF railroad, terminating on the Mistle property on the south side of the roadway. On August 6th, though, we presented, council passed the resolution, which is the first step toward eminent domain. This is the second step. There are four property owners, we're in active negotiations and discussions with two of them. I fully feel that we will reach a settlement with those two owners. There are two other owners where it's not quite as promising. To stay on schedule, we need to go ahead and pass this ordinance, which will authorize the city attorney to go ahead and file. We can continue to negotiate with all property owners up until the time the appraisers meet, which will be roughly 40 days into the process. So we still have time to discuss, it's just that this is the next step. Be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Council, any questions?
I'm not sure if I remember seeing the actual properties that are not cooperating, which owners and?
Okay, the two properties that we're, are basically from, if you start at Washington Street, basically proceed US 56 on the south on the drawing, and then the Taco Bell property we need to, we're not terribly positive on where we'll end up there.
So?
South of the tracks were good and at the very end were good.
So the title work that you presented?
Well, that was probably, that was a miscommunication, you didn't need, that's not part of the ordinance. We, I'm sorry, we burdened you with more than you really?
I actually enjoyed reading it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
But, well, I'm assuming though that the two property owners are in this, embedded in these title?
That is correct, right.
Commissions or reports?
Basically, we're dealing, what we're doing, the two is the Jacobs Properties, and then the KFC Taco Bell owners, which is a corporation in Texas.
And I guess what is their disagreement? They're not getting?
Well, it will ultimately boil down to price.
And you can discuss those terms, I'm assuming?
But that would be purchasing? And in the case of purchasing, we are permitted to go into executive session for purchasing, is that correct?
Are you wanting him to indicate what the negotiations are?
But this?
Well, I don't know what's proper at this time, but?
No, at this point?
Are we set on a price?
Yeah, I guess what is the?
Well, they, one feels it's worth considerably more than we feel it's worth, and at this point, the best thing is to go ahead. The Jacobs basically want more money, and the Taco Bell has issues for gaining to basically the easement and how it will impact their property.
Which is what? Which is what? How will it impact their property?
Well, their position is basically it will infringe their ability to expand.
Expand south?
Expand to the west. So basically translates to dollars.
We have the right to go into executive session, discuss this with the terms that we've offered, right?
You do. I don't know that it's really, at this stage, that's really what you want to do. We haven't even filed a condemnation at this point. You've had a land acquisition person negotiating with these parties, and we don't typically get into those discussions at this point, unless there's some real need to do so.
But we did, for instance, on the easement with Robert Cook's property, when I asked if we should be in executive session for that, what is the difference, I guess?
There is no, there's no difference, but-
So we did, we did address the-
At this point, unless you have some real desire to know what the numbers are being, I mean, there's no need to do that at this point, that's what I'm indicating.
Why was there a need to do that with his property?
That was kind of an unusual situation versus this is a straightforward acquisition of easements. That was a cul-de-sac that this gentleman had blocked off, and not a typical situation.
What I've been suggesting, at this point, we haven't concluded negotiations. This is just the next step. We could always come back if it's council's desire and have an executive session at some point in the future to discuss. At this point, I'm not prepared to talk about the numbers. It's just what we are seeing is we're not getting any responses, or we feel that time is running out. So the best thing to do is to pass this ordinance, which says you may proceed. We haven't, Jim hasn't even prepared the petition yet, but we, and once the petition is prepared and filed, there's still another 40 days of time to talk.
I think we should put it on the agenda in that 40 to 45 day window and get our ducks in a row, and then talk about it thereafter versus-
You always have the opportunity to negotiate with the owner right to the point where the appraisers use the award that you paid the money in. So that is the timeframe we still have.
Absolutely, and that's the frame that I'm referring to. I don't think we want to show our cards, if you will, too early and get into the weeds, quite frankly, until we are better suited.
If we were to reach that point per acquisition, we could go into executive session and say there's an offer on the table that's been accepted for X, and then make a decision outside of executive session to purchase it, if that's the case.
And typically, what will happen is, once an agreement is struck, we will be presenting it to you for acceptance.
And they just also take off kind of the formal appraisal process as well?
It does. The first hearing, the judge determines, do we have the right of condemnation, which we do, and is this a public project, which it is? That's the first hearing. At that hearing, assuming he makes those two findings, he appoints three commissioners to start the process. They have 20 days to hold a public hearing and enter their award of what they think these easements are worth. They can extend that if they think they need more time, but it's typically a 45 to 60 day window before we actually are, we pay our money in and we have the right to proceed with the project.
And that's a good, actually, that's probably, not to belabor the point, but a good opportunity for the new council members. Once that occurs, then we have the ability to write the check for that amount and begin the construction process. Is that true?
Just so you know, you have a professional right-of-way acquisition person, very experienced, working with these property owners, trying to work things out. So it's not as if we're filing without talking to them, we're working with them or negotiating.
And so what are the costs involved with the condemnation?
You don't know what the award's going to be, obviously. Just the cost of filing it and going through, having through commissioners typically runs in the $25,000 to $5,000 range.
But for Mr. Cook's property, we were told it was $7,500.
That was the acquisition.
But you have two people-
That was the cost of paying the money in to acquire it.
That was, that was the value of the land, which is a totally different setup than this. But that, with the number, when I quoted 5 to 7,500, that was the estimated cost of his land.
We're in two different stages.
Right, I seem to recall, though, that the cost of condemning the property was $7,500. Did I misunderstand that, or?
Oh.
That the legal cost?
The legal cost would have been for Mr., any condemnation's going to run you roughly $2,500 bucks.
Get it on file and get through your commissioners' hearing. It's typically somewhere in the $5,000 range. Once the award's in-
Times two.
We pay the money in, the property owner has 30 days to appeal that and fight about how much the award is later on, so.
Whether it should even be condemned.
Right, so the $5,000, $2,500 to $5,000 is per property.
Gets you on file, gets the condemnation going. It has nothing to do with how much the-
Acquisition price.
How much you pay after you, after you have the authority to purchase.
Yeah.
And it's also not per property, it's basically the action. So basically, if you're condemning five properties, it's going to cost you $3,000 to $5,000. If you're condemning one property, it's going to cost you $3,000 to $5,000. That's what it costs to get the appraisers to sit and go through the court. So it's, you know, the more tracks you're going after, the-
And I assume that cost is less than the difference between the two parties at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
We would be recommending. And there's also the fact that if, you know, we may not come to a conclusion, and this is the only way to acquire the property also.
And we've got, as part of this project, an estimate on what easement acquisition is-
That's correct.
-expected to cost. And we're figuring that whether we're purchasing it or requiring it through condemnation, that we're going to be staying within the bounds of the estimate that we were-
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
How would council like to proceed with ordinance 2408?
I move with pass ordinance number 2408, declaring it a public necessity to acquire land by condemnation and directing the city attorney to make application to the district court for the appointment of commissioners to appraise land and to conduct condemnation proceedings relative to the White Drive sewer improvements project.
Second? Motion Harrison, second, Gregorsik, that we pass ordinance 2408. Harrison?
Yes.
Gregorsik?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
2408 passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Staff update for council regarding agendas for this week. More information will come as the week proceeds.
Yes. Watch your emails closely. Expect to hear from us regarding the activities for the chief this week.
I do want to say that I was very, very touched by the concern of all of the department chiefs that were here, members of the various law enforcement and fire departments that were here today, and the care they wish to give to the ceremonies for this, for this week. And we'll be in touch and keep you updated. The times for the services have been listed for local. For the community, chief will be in state, late in state on Wednesday. And then for the public, visitation is Thursday evening at the Nazarene Chapel, and services will be there 10 a.m. Friday morning, so we will keep you updated. Council, anything for staff? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Motion Morrow, second, Freeman, that we adjourn. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Sure? It will be, it will be a very, it will be a very proper, very proper sentence.